I'd like to welcome everyone to our Utah County Planning Commission. For this October 21st, 2025, we're starting the meeting at 5:30 PM. First item on the agenda is to approve our minutes from our last meeting. And so I believe all the commissioners have received the minutes from the prior meeting in their package. And is there any comments on that?
No, just so moved for approval.
Move for approval?
I second that.
We, we changed the agenda a few months back to not to do the pledge, just for your information. If we want to put it back on the agenda, we can do that by a vote. It's up to this group, but it was removed a few months back. And I don't even know if I was here when it was removed, but anyways, it is removed. In the agenda as at this point, but if we want it back on, we can vote on that. It's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
To prove the minutes from the last meeting without any edits. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes have been approved. We'll now move to the next item of business, which are some conditional use applications. The first one, Jeremy Rigtrup. Do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this application is submitted by the Rigtrup egg farm. They are requesting to construct the feed mill that exceeds 40 feet in height. So just to be clear, the conditional use is for the the height in excess of 40 feet, not necessarily for the female. The female would be a permitted use on the property. This is kind of zoomed out here where the location of the site. This is kind of zoomed in to where they would like to construct the female. And then kind of just to give you an idea, that is the kind of the plans, the preliminary drawing of the, of the, of the plans for the female. I've highlighted the area that would exceed 40 feet in height. So it's just that shaded area, it's kind of light. So, so you can see it is just a different color, a little bit reddish color.
So. So everything about the red is?
Is above 40.
Is above the 40 feet. So including the silos?
Yep.
And?
Correct.
Tower, okay.
So the female does include some occupied space. They, they intend to have some offices and a control room that will be occupied. But all the occupied areas will be below 40 feet. The unoccupied areas will be above 40 feet, which matches up with our ordinance requirements. The tall, the height of the structure that they're requesting is 158 feet, which is obviously quite tall. But just to go back to this slide, so I didn't get a good slide of this. The, the Rigtrup property is kind of up against the mountains. So most of the viewing of that site will be looking towards the mountain, which will kind of obscure a lot of the, the, the sight line of that, of that structure. So it will be kind of covered up through the height of the, of the mountains behind it. So that will help to limit the kind of views of that, of that structure. They are not intending to paint the structure. So it will be just kind of the metal, from what we were, was represented us, it will be kind of the metal appearance of that structure without any specific color to that. The rest of the, rest of the farm will, oops, went too far. Rest of the farm will kind of remain the same. This will be a new structure, everything else will remain. They'll continue operations of their egg farm. With this being included to support their, their operations. The nearest property line to this structure is 200 feet away, which is the north property line. From where they're locating the, the tallest point of the structure. The property is fronts along Tunnel Road, which is a class B road, which is required to, for occupied buildings. It would meet the qualification or the requirements for that structure to be occupied. The nearest, the nearest dwelling is oh dang, I didn't write, I knew I wrote it down somewhere. Is about a mile away, if I recall, and it's to the south. It's also on, on the, if I remember, I just on the church or next to the church farm. If you have any questions about any of the president or staff comments, then I'll be happy to answer those. Leave the, the applicant is here as well, if you have questions for the applicant.
So just, just as a reminder, or remind me, so in the case of a conditional use, the the only, the only exception at this point to vote on is whether there's a, a harmful effect that is not mitigated.
Correct, yeah, so conditional use is a permitted use that can be, if there are detrimental effects or there are things that would be detrimental to adjacent property owners, then they can be mitigated through reasonably and to, or reasonably anticipated detrimental effects can be mitigated through mitigation measures applied through the, through this process. So with this conditional use being a height, it would mainly be kind of adjacent, how close it is to a property line, if it will affect adjacent property owners, based on the height of the structure. The sight lines a lot of times is, is sometimes can be an issue just because of the height of a structure next to other properties that, that may, may affect kind of some of their, their, or their properties. But generally, there, and then also just kind of the, the coloration and appearance of it. So it just kind of depends on what conditions exist on this site, which there aren't a lot of adjacent property owners that have occupied structures or that this is frequented by anybody but the, but the farm. There are people that are out there, but not necessarily ones that live on adjacent properties to this site.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we have the applicant speak? Okay, we'd like to have the applicant. Forward Jeremy Rigtrup. Rigtrup, if you're here.
I'm not Jeremy, but I, I'm Mark Greenwood with ALM Engineering. We're the company that's been working with them for this application. Didn't see them right away, so I guess they may not have attended, but if there's any questions, I think Greg did a good job in the presentation. This is a fairly large egg production facility, it's been around since the early 90s. They produce grass fed chickens, there are no caged chickens out there. And, and it's been a good business for the community and, and for the locals. We, we hope this is something that'll help benefit the, the production. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
I have a question. So just curious, why not enlarge the footprint of the structure rather than going up as far as you are?
Well, this is, this is something that, that they, they have a, from what I understand, it's a, it's got a mixing facility where they mix everything together. And it's always done in stages. And so this is the same type of facilities done in other, other egg farm facility. I didn't design this system, but, but this is, this is what was the, the preferred method of storage for the, for the site. Other than that, I, I can't tell you anymore.
Do you know about what's the height of the area that would be occupied?
The height of the area that would be occupied? Oh, it's no more than 40 feet, yeah. The occupied area is right at the bottom. It's just the, it's just the silos and the, and the tower that runs the production out there, that's the tall section. Does that make sense?
It was on, it was on the second floor, but it was below the, it was below the maximum height for occupying structure. That helps.
Thanks.
Any, any other questions for this, Mr. Greenwood? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff or discussion?
Hearing on Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that the Utah County Planning Commission approve conditional use permit CU 2025-08. Request for the heights of a proposed feed mill to exceed 40 feet as part of an existing egg farm, subject to staff findings, including in the staff report and the following conditions, listing one through four on page three.
I'll second that. Hey, it's been moved and seconded to approve this conditional use permit. As, as written, without any amendments. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. It's been approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is a conditional use permit for Mosaida Solar. Do you have a staff?
Yep. So this application is for a two D scale solar production facility, which is out in the Alberta area again. This is the area which they're, they having, the parcels that were included in the, in the application and the area, the surrounding area. This is a little bit farther out from that area to kind of give you an idea where that's located in the county. This is the area that they're anticipating utilizing based on the application submitted. Kind of the location of the photovoltaic cells. And I don't know if I'll be able to, but there's also some structures that are anticipated to be built with that. An operation facility or operation ma, or maintenance facility to be located there. And then they have also battery storage to the north. Or is that the substation, sorry, that's the substation. And here is just kind of a little bit more zoomed in area. This also kind of will go along with some of the staff comments. With that, as you can see, there's some existing structures here already. Those structures are part of a pipeline, a gas pipeline that is in the center of, of the, the properties that are proposed to be included in, within the area of the photovoltaic, sorry, the solar facility. The total area that we're looking at that is included in the application is about 300 acres. There are 29 parcels included in that. The area that they're anticipating utilizing as part of that sort of facility is about close to 3200 acres. The stated before, the facility will include a battery, a battery storage system, 100 medical megawatt battery energy storage system. And then also an operation man, or maintenance facility, a building that would be occupied. The, as this area is located in two different zones. Let me go back to this one. So the, most of the areas in the plan, Goshen Valley Plan Community Zone, which I should have had a slide for that to show you. But, and then there is one parcel that is in the mining grazing zone, which is the parcel kind of right in the middle, if I recall. This parcel, no, not that parcel, that parcel there. If I remember right, I could be wrong. The so the planning, or Goshen Valley Plan Community Zone does have an allowance for this type of facility as a conditional use, it's an exact, an exception kind of for existing uses. The plant, Goshen Valley Plan Community Zone is kind of designed to have multiple uses. But this is kind of one of the carryovers from previous zoning designations that, that they wish to, to kind of continue forward. They have the applicants or the, the property owners have agreed to, to this application and have have either signed or submitted consent forms to the, to the application to make sure that we comply with our ordinance. The surrounding areas is generally used, is unoccupied, used for agricultural uses, grazing and other activities like similar to that. There is an area that is, has more residential uses, which is in the Alberta area that has 20 to 30 homes in, in this area. Which is about a half mile away from the boundaries of that facility. And this is kind of showing the location of where the, the solar panels are anticipated to be located in, in relationship to those residences.
So that, that, that property that you say is about half a mile.
Is about a half a mile away, correct. The, they do intend to the, the operation and maintenance facility be occupied. In, in relation to our ordinance, that is required to be on a qualifying road and Alberta Slant Road can qualify for that, subject to meeting any in road improvement requirements from Public Works. Public Works reviewed the application, they just wanted to make clear that, that, that road that they're proposing to be on is a, an unpaved road that does have an exception for that allowance for an occupied structure. But they wanted to make clear that that is not maintained during the winter time because it's unpaved and it's they're unable to plow that road in the winter time. And so it is not maintained during the winter time months. As stated before, there is, there are two parcels surrounded by the, the project area that currently have an access onto Alberta Slant Road. As you can see, this is their access here. That will be required to be maintained so that they, so the pipeline can be, the properties owned by the pipeline can be accessed and continue to access their property and maintain that, that pipeline and those facilities. The proposed area is not within any annexation policy planned for any adjacent municipality. And it's pretty far away from any adjacent municipality. So as it, as it exists, there, there isn't any anticipation that that will be annexed anytime soon into a municipality. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. The, the conditions that have been recommended are conditions similar to what we've used in the past with other solar facilities. And are consistent with kind of what we've approved previously.
Do you know generally speaking where this is in relation to other solar projects that we've approved?
Yeah, I can pull that up. There is, so let me go back, but before I answer that. So just to give you an idea, there are, and I can pull up better map if you need it. But there is a solar facility immediately adjacent to most of the boundaries here that has been approved. And then there's also a solar facility that's been approved on this side, that's also in the PC zone. Neither of which have submitted permits for any development of that, those facilities. So again, a lot of solar facilities have received conditional use approvals. They generally ask for those approvals in order to get into a queue with Rocky Mountain Power, in order to be able to connect to the, the grid. And this helps them in the process of, of kind of going through that. Going through their approval, Rocky Mountain Powers approval process. And so whether or not all of these will be developed is kind of a question of whether or not they have the funding to be able to develop the facilities required to connect to the grid. Hopefully that happens. But I can, if you need, I can pull up a map to show you where those facilities are located.
I think that's sufficient.
Let me, give me one second. Because I forgot to pull that up.
Sure seems to be a lot of solar panels going in on that west side of the lake.
Yeah, it, you're, you're correct.
You forgot the exclamation mark at the end.
Right, exactly.
Maybe it's a star. Forgot to capitalize the P in password.
Alright, so the areas. So the areas that are highlighted in blue. These large areas are the two existing, or the approved areas. This is the first, and then this is the second I talked about. There is also one adjacent to that. And then this green area is the proposed area that is being proposed in this application.
Okay.
And there's some further north of that, right?
Yes, there, there are some further north of that. This one is actually being developed currently. And other than that, there, there have been no other solar facilities events that have submitted applica, or permits for construction.
Collectively, that's a whole lot of land.
Yes.
So this, so this request is, is expanding a prior?
No, it is, it is a separate application that is adjacent to other existing approvals.
Okay, so it's all, all new, a new permit?
Yep, yep, exactly. This is an, an applicant that has not submitted an application with our, with the county prior to this. The applicant is here to discuss, they had to have a presentation if you want to review that. And then if you have questions for them.
Any further questions for staff?
I don't recall seeing it in here, is this like a 20, 30 year lease? Is that about what we're looking at?
I, they, we didn't get details on the, the duration of their lease. The, the approvals for this, and this is probably not part of your question, but the, the approval, the applicant can probably answer that more clearly than I can. But the approvals for this is, have been recently changed, just to remind you that they, there's a three year approval and then they have one extension that they can request up to five years. So a total of eight years before they would have to return to request a new conditional use.
Any further questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Hey. Thank you, Commissioners, Sean Gibson with LRE. We have a presentation, but Greg pretty much went through it. So to spare your, I mean, through the, no, through the bulk of the, no, that's fine. Through the bulk of the information. So happy to just answer questions or rip through this as well. Basically, LRE, large company, been around for almost 25 years. Big developer, wind, solar and battery. We've done this before. We have a lot of gigawatts in operation and in development. So we're here for the long term. We went through these details, landowners are Farmland Reserve and Irma Kay Trust, so Kay family members. Those are, are who we've been focused on outreach to date. We are in the queue for interconnection with Pacific Corp. And again, that high voltage transmission passes over the site, so we don't have to have any genti. So that makes it convenient. Project location, we talked about this. More basically undeveloped. Why did we pick this area? Pretty limited impact, not a lot of mitigation that's needed right now. Talked about planning. We talked about this as well. Main message here is, our plan is to generate a lot of economic value with limited demand on public services. value with limited demand on public services. And so we come in, we build during construction, there's impact, but during operation, very little. And it just, it's a silent partner to the community for thirty plus years, throwing off revenue to fund resources. Mitigation, key part of the CUP. So if you have any questions about how we can minimize that, it's included in the application. So if you do have any questions there, this is a timeline. Essentially, development is a long process. As we heard, there's others that have been approved. It's a it's a battle to to generate the to to deliver these projects. So we've been in it for about five years already. Tonight's in the middle. And then if we do receive the approval, we'll move forward with additional studies and this is conceptual design, figure out exactly where this will, how this will be designed in in working with the county as well. We did have a pre pre app discussion already with the county. So that conversation is happening. And and just wanted to clarify, our request is for the approval of the CUP as well as proactively an extension for up to five years. If that's possible, given the complexity of these and the interconnection financing, the uncertainties of the market. So that is our request. One more, one more side side. So this is just as we as we move forward with this, assuming approval, we'd like the community to help. They can reach out to us for here. We have a website, project website, a voicemail and an email for direct contact. So please, for those that are listening, get in touch. And I think that's it. Yeah. Any questions?
What's the anticipated life of the project?
Thirty plus years.
So there's no end date already in writing for a lease?
No end date. So and it depends on the how the market develops. If there's additional, you know, technology advancements. So there's, there can be repowers. So it's really based on the demand for energy, which all forecasts are indicating in this area are going to be significant going forward. So as long as it's economical and there's power demand, we will work to extend that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. How how long did you say?
Typically thirty plus years.
Thirty years is the life expectancy. Okay.
With no end, no end date. So at least thirty years.
At least thirty years.
Yeah, so similar to any power plant, right? So significant investment, infrastructure. Once it's contracted with customers, it's a steady local power generation supply. Example of this is the Nevo Power Plant is about, I think, two hundred fifty megawatts. This is proposed at four hundred. So yeah, long term energy infrastructure investments.
What is the land being utilized for now?
Some seasonal grazing. That's it. And then some unauthorized.
Looking at that picture, it doesn't seem like you have to like get rid of all the vegetation. You can keep a lot of the vegetation on the ground.
Yeah, so we did mention land stewardship here. It's something that we're committed to. So it's really light touch, right? So typically, part of a land stewardship would be coming in here. One, we've done the initial environmental studies, so it doesn't seem like there's any species of concern. We'll do additional studies as we start moving through, moving through design. But yeah, currently, it's kind of deer mule on the left or on the west side, some some fessence. But no species of concern in terms of biodiversity, we will put in a vegetation management plan and a biodiversity management plan. And typically, that that involves us going out, removing invasive species and reseeding with natives. And then, yeah, the practices now are relatively light touch in terms of the foundation. And yeah, the idea is that this is the land is essentially conserved for that for that time period.
What are the objections? What are some of the objections you find?
Objections? I don't think there was any public comments received. Yeah. Typical was those mitigation, which is traffic around construction, noise around construction, dust around construction. It's primarily that construction phase. And yeah, we haven't done a traffic study. Right now, we're assuming construction routes from the south. But we need to get into that to figure out where our suppliers are and where that where that would be. But primarily, it's it's traffic. And then if there is nearby neighbors, is there dust and is there noise? And, you know, management of the four to six hundred people that'll be involved with the construction. Any additional questions?
Any further questions?
Just a question back to Greg. Sorry, you jumped up. I tried to catch you before you jumped. So are the current parcels owned by Farmland Reserve? Are they taxable properties?
They are. Well, yeah, I believe they are. I don't, I think that they're they're, yeah, they're not, I I don't know that they, I haven't seen any evidence that they have, they aren't taxable. Let me see if I can get some information on that.
I believe Farmland Reserve is a taxable entity.
They are.
Yeah.
So this would just increase the taxable value.
That's the, you know, that's that significant additional tax revenues with limited public services required, right? So it should in an area of, you know, this is zoned, basically, the majority of it's zoned industrial. Or in the kind of planned community zone, it's industrial or commercial. So the long term plan was industrial use.
Does your access to the property, not just for the construction phase, but ongoing access across other properties, does it have the road that it needs in order to not disrupt other landowners?
No. So we have, it's not up there, but we have multiple site accesses. So it's, there's one, at least one off of six, one one off of sixty eight, and then a few off of Alberta Slant Road. So yeah, as discussed, we've had discussions with the with county staff as well, which was, okay, it's a, it's a gravel road. We can use that. Needs to be class B, it needs to be improved, but it's not through. There's no no impact on other parcels in terms of access.
You guys put fencing around it, or do you leave it pretty open?
We do fencing and, you know, that depends on the the design, different types of fences. So around the substation and the battery storage, high security, you know, life security issues there. Around the perimeter, there's security fences as well. And then it depends on how much of a buffer on the outside of that, we might do fences on the outside of that that are more wildlife friendly, just depending.
Yeah, that that guess that was my question is how, I don't really know the, like, how how do these how do they impact like wildlife, you know, migration routes and that kind of thing? Do you do you know anything about that? How they they work with wildlife? Because I'm, my guess is that's probably like, pretty good winter winter range. My guess is pretty good winter range for for animals. And if they lose that, I don't know if that's an impact you guys consider or?
It's an impact we consider typically to special, you know, threatened species. So we will, as we get into design and understand where the panels will be. If there's so, again, I think it's almost five thousand under lease and it's it's two thousand ish for the proposed infrastructure. So we'll look at that to see, is there boundaries that we can, that'll allow?
Like migration routes or?
That allow migration routes, keep out deer and humans, but let others through. So that is part of our our process. But yeah, we do need to secure it against entrance, which is can keep other, other, other animals out as well.
Okay, any other questions? Just before you leave, are are we okay with the five year extension as part of the application or is that?
Yeah, so I just, that was one of the things I just wanted to clarify. So the there, the ordinance does allow a request to extend the three year, the initial three year to five years. And then at the end of that five years, they would be able, the applicant would be able to request an additional five years to extend that approval. So that would, that generally, they just have to show that for the extension, for the initial extension, that that extension is necessary for them to kind of meet approval requirements or to be able to be able to get a permit or be able to get prepared for a permit to be issued from our office. So it does allow for for an extension. And so the what I just was confirming that they were asking for an extension for the initial, and then they would have to return for the other one at that point. So the extension would be to twenty thirty is what they're requesting at this point. And then in twenty, prior to twenty thirty, before the extension expires, they could come back and ask for an additional extension of five years.
So the the current permit as written would give five years?
The, so the way that our ordinance works, it's three years, and then they can request up to five years initially. And that's what they're doing at this point, based on the approval requirements and the the queue that they're being required to go through with Rocky Mountain Power. And then prior to the expiration of that approval for five years, they can ask for an additional five years to meet any of those requirements that they would have to meet if they haven't been able to get it done in the for the initial five years, if that makes sense. I'm trying to make it as confusing as I can.
Do we need to make any amendments to the?
Yeah, so just, yeah, I would just on the, it would just be to add a condition that the expiration be at twenty thirty. The first initial approval be extended to twenty thirty in order to meet their request. Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'll move to approve the conditional use application as stated here in the staff recommendation with the additional five year. So to twenty thirty approval.
I'll second it. Okay. It's been moved to approve the conditional use permit for the site of solar. Extending to twenty thirty. Is there any further discussion from any commissioners?
One second.
Been moved and seconded, okay? If there's no discussion, then we will move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion, the the permit is approved. Okay, we have another conditional use. This one for Farmland Reserve Incorporated. And do we have a staff report?
We do show with our with planning department.
Yeah, we have staff report attached to this document. So this conditional use permit, CU twenty twenty five dash ten, so is submitted by Alberta Valley Ag. Associated parcel is currently owned by the Farmland Reserve, I N C. And the requested for property is located at sixteen two hundred, two hundred four cells, twelve eight hundred watts in the Alberta area. So the applicant is proposing to build three new grain storage bins. So in this area, if you can, the triangles piece, and each about one hundred and twenty two feet tall. And to include an existing milk silo, which is about forty three feet tall. So these structures will be used to support ongoing farming operations, mainly for grain storage and milk production. So the property is in the PC zones, Goshen Valley Plan Community Zone. So it's regulated under the same standard as the A forty agriculture zone. So in this zone, agriculture storage structure are permitted use, but anything taller than forty feet needs planning commission approve as a conditional use. So, and this is their elevation plans, and you can see, this is existing milk saddle. And applicant is here. And yeah, we are happy to answer any question you may have for this per conditional use permit.
So this picture here is the grain, current grain silo?
Yeah, existing milk silo.
Milk silo.
Yep, the milk silo.
So milk saddle, yeah.
Okay, any, any questions for staff before we have the applicant? Okay, do we have someone here representing Farmland Reserve?
Yes.
Great.
This is our applicant.
Yeah, Brandon Anderson, general manager with Alberta Valley Ag, part of Farmland Reserve. I guess just a couple comments to make off of Joe's presentation. You can see the three bins are actually, they're sixty four feet in height, the elevator leg to distribute the grain into the the silos is a hundred and twenty two feet that we're requesting as a max, max height on the project. Part of the reasoning behind these silos is the current grain storage that we've had at we have a site that we've been leasing from Desert Grain Storage, and they have, they are needing that storage for themselves. And so we needed to create our own storage onsite. One of the benefits of having it there onsite that we showed will be currently, we have to take the grain out of the the silos that are located three miles north or three miles south of us. And we do that about every two weeks. We bring it in to grind to then feed to our our cows. So having this stored onsite will allow for when we do have grain harvest, middle, end of July, it'll all come into this facility. And then as we need to use it, it'll be onsite already. There'll be no more traffic bringing it in and out of the the facility outside of of harvest time. So allow us to to store it there onsite, grind it onsite and then feed it, feed it right there. So I don't know, have any other other comments on it outside of that?
How about a question?
Yep.
Where where does, where's this grain produced at?
It's all produced around both north and south of the facility on the Farmland Reserve property. So it's you know, as far north, you know, about eleven miles north to five or six miles south. So that's all all local, local wheat that we produce.
Thank you.
The, so you had the two, the three silos and then a tower, I don't know, something in the middle that's so it.
Yeah, an elevator and Zach's here with the company that's kind of done the design.
Most of the height that you're looking for here. And and I guess, I don't know, just from the diagram, I can't relate. Is it like a, is it like a single pole that goes up or what, what, what?
I'm Zach Pal, I, system design. There in the middle of, if that's what you're talking about, it's a grain elevator. And the support tower, it's not shown here, but we actually have stairs going all the way around. Safety was a big concern with these guys and making sure that people could get up there and do maintenance as needed. So that support tower does two functions, ease of access for all the different components on that elevator. And then also for future expansion. So if they decide to do a different crop, say, they're doing wheat right now, but say they want to expand and do corn. This facility allows for easy future expansion, whatever they need to do that way. And that elevator tower will allow for additional catwalks to be built off of it and be ready for any kind of expansion they do.
A question for staff, because I noticed the staff recommendation says the storage bins shall not exceed a height of a hundred and twenty two feet. Do we need to adjust that because the storage bins aren't going to be the hundred and twenty two feet? It's just the whole structure? Does that matter?
It, it won't matter a great deal, but if you want to be more It, it won't matter a great deal, but if you want to be more clear about the require, or about your approval, then yeah, you can make that modification and that will be fine, and we'll make sure that we make that adjustment in our approval. Also, just as we're on this, on the recommendations, item five and six were carried over from a different item. They should, they can be eliminated as well. So they didn't need to be included as a part of the staff recommendations, just to be clear.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a farmer. I'm curious again, how many, how many tons can you put in each one of those of product?
Typically deal with bushels, just because.
Bushel, okay, how many bushels?
Each of those will hold right around a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Bushels. And you figure fifty pounds a bushel, or what do you figure?
Sixty pounds for wheat, fifty-six pounds for corn. So I don't know what the math is off the top of my head, but a lot.
That's a lot of wheat. That's great. Thank you. And what do you measure in baskets?
Well, we do, we do bushel.
Bushels too.
We're, we're to, but we're to the point where we're trying to sell it by the pound.
Okay.
That's the dream, right there, yeah.
Right. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion. I'll make the motion that the Utah County Planning Commission approved conditional use permit CU two zero two five dash ten. And as requested here, and that includes items one through seven.
I'm gonna strike five, six, and seven.
Yeah. Strike five through seven because those were copied on accident.
Okay. We only need to go one, two, four. Is that right? And did, did we, sorry, did, so one through four, and then do we want to? You, did you want to suggest an amendment on the silos being sixty-nine, whatever it was, sixty-nine?
Just make sure that the silo's height is recorded accurately and that the height of the elevator is recorded.
I think there's only this part I need to go, it's only going up sixty-nine feet to the top of the elevator here.
So the elevator at one hundred and twenty-two feet in this, the grain silos, it's the, the height indicated on the plan, proposed plans, okay?
Yeah, we could, we could just say that best proposed on the plan.
I'll make the motion to that request. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved to prove CU twenty twenty-five eleven as, as written, one through four with an amendment to match the diagram that's been provided.
Yes.
And seconded. Is there any further discussion from the commission, questions, anything else to discuss? Okay, then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, again unanimous. Thank you, Farmland Reserve. We'll move to the next item, application CU twenty twenty-five dash eleven from C M C Rock LLC. And you're, you're presenting for staff.
I'm presenting for staff, yep. I'm Kevin Stinson. We were approached by C M C Rock and given an application for a mining operation. As you can see there on the map, in the area highlighted in blue, this area is in the P C zone, and the P C zone does allow a mining operation. However, it does require the planning commission approval. Going through the process, they did amend it, if you wouldn't mind going to the next one, and they have lessened the area. So basically, it was the top portion, almost of that area that you originally saw. And so it's this area here, still in the P C zone, all owned by Farmland Reserve. They will be having, as you can see, the P C zone, all around it is the mining and grazing, and then a bit to the east is some R A five as well, but mostly in that mining zone. This is the applicant's submittal here. You can see they're, they are going to be accessing off of a U dot road, a state road. And there, they've already been in the process of getting that access permit. It does not seem to be a problem. Staff, the, the applicant has been working with, with us, with the Public Works, the, the county engineer, with building, fire, U dot, all in the process of getting this moving forward. This, this here, again, is just for the approval of the, the mining operation. If it is approved through the, the commission, they do have a lengthy checklist of things that they need to submit as well. It's in the Utah County Land Use Ordinance six twenty-four and twenty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, where they do have to follow many of the, the state, county, and the federal regulations on, on mining operations. That includes environmental and many different options as well. They've also been in contact with Dogum, Department of Oil, Gas, and Mining through the state. They're only planning on mining sand. If you notice on there, they did make, like you said, the amendment where they brought down the amount of parcels that they are going to be using, and they are no longer going to be using a crusher. So if you do approve it on the recommendations, just on that recommendation, we do not want the crusher on there. So it should just be screening for the aggregate material. The applicant is here to answer any questions, or I can answer any for you as well.
It just looked like this is right in the middle of that solar project.
It is very close.
Is it?
It is just north, yeah.
It includes some of the same parcels.
How does that work? They mine and solar at the same time?
I believe the solar is a little bit more to the south because they, they remove those portions down there.
So let me show you. So the area that is included.
Wait a minute, are you playing Tetris here?
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of, lot of stuff going on in planning.
That top orange piece about the, the three quarters, it's not going to be the piece to the far west, but almost the top three quarters of that top section in orange is what they're going to be doing. Or sorry, the, the farthest east portions of that.
And the blue is the, is the solar, right?
And the green.
And the green.
So the green is the, the new solar project, or this, the one that was just approved.
That's right.
And then let me pull up the area.
Which means most of the.
So the parcels that are included in the, their application include.
It's those, just not parcel number two on the, on the east.
Okay. Oh, so there, there, yeah, is, the, the overlap is, there is overlap on, on those parcels. But, yeah. So that, that could be that they're gonna use the mining operation and then put the solar farm over the top of it, doesn't have, necessarily happen at the same time.
And if you do look back at what they plan on mining, they have to list all parcels they're going to be doing. It, it is, if you go back to that other map, the very last one of mine, you can see it's actually the very last one there. So that, that little corner down on the bottom left, that's the little corner of that last parcel. So they're not mining that whole area.
But they, they could take mining and then, and then once that's finished, then start solar.
Right, it doesn't have to happen at the same.
Doesn't have to happen at the same time, correct.
I suppose it's not for us to figure out whether or not they've got their contracts.
From Farmland, signed them both, so we'll let him work out how that, they're going to work together on that, maybe you know a little more.
Well, is there any, any further questions for staff? If not, we'll, we'll, we'll have the applicant then. Yeah, thank you.
We'd love to hear how the solar mining is going to happen.
Underground solar, you haven't heard of it? No, my name is Sam Cusick with C M C Rock. I am one of the owners, along with my dad and my brothers and sisters of this company. We have a handful of aggregate and different mineral mining operations. Both of them based in Utah County, as well as several ready mixed batch plants that are based Utah Wasatch County. This is a operation, as you can see, this, this map is a cut and fill map that is up there. If you haven't ever seen some of those, that it's kind of like a heat map that shows you what you got to take out and what you'd have to kind of level in order to make that flat. We can talk to this gentleman who presented for the solar company, but what you see there is all those red marks on that map are sand dunes. And sand dunes for long-term development of Farmland Reserve, as well as a solar project, you can't necessarily build solar on top of sand dunes, right? You need kind of big flat land in order to put that on. This amount of sand is something that it's, I mean, you're talking, you know, five to 10 million tons of sand sitting there, that otherwise this gentleman over here, if it's a solar project, would have to pay somebody to move out of the way so he could put his solar panels down. Our plan, what we've done is we've got a mineral lease from Farmland Reserve, which is different than the surface lease that they have over there, the solar project, is to come in, mine those dunes to make them flat to the surrounding area, screen the sand off the top, you know, sell the sand into the market as a way to be able to move that sand over a handful of years versus, you know, trying to chuck it out and move it in two years during their construction phase of building that. So essentially, just taking these sand dunes and making them flat, so that the land is usable afterwards.
How many million pounds?
A million tons. This is, I mean, don't quote me on this, my guess is somewhere between five to 10 million tons of, of sand. Yeah, it's a lot of bushels.
Question before he asked.
It's a lot of bushels.
That's a lot of truck loads.
So you know, our, our mining plan is to start on the north end of that. Essentially, you know, make it flat and start working south and just eating those sand dunes down until this gentleman over here decides his solar project is ready to go and they want to go there. You know, we'd probably have to talk and kind of work out some arrangement between us and him coming in and building a solar project, but you know, this is also a benefit to him. And we've done this north of here, maybe five miles, there's another solar project that we're currently pulling sand out of right now, the same situation. They can't build on it anyways, so they need it out of the way. And we can come in and, you know, kind of move that for them before they get in there.
So where there is, there are other solar projects in the same area, same vicinity, similar vicinity. Does your operation create any conditions that would be detrimental to those projects as far as the amount of dirt in the air or debris, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so this, well, what I was talking about is to the north, maybe five, 10 miles, you have the Utah County landfill kind of between them. We follow all state and federal regulations on division of air quality. We have to get division of air quality permit and a few other things. You know, it's following all the regulations, make sure the opacity of any dust created is under the acceptable amount, right? So you know, we do have, as far as, you know, being able to go into mine, certain other conditions that we have to meet, so it doesn't adversely affect others.
I'm just curious, where are you relocating the sand?
Right now, the sand is going into concrete. We actually use it and mix it in with some of our products, bedding lines for utilities. A lot of this will be going, this particular project will be going to golf course in Salem. You know, so there's lots of needs with the, you know, the growth that is experienced in the county. It's a, a good building material for, you know, bedding of utility lines, other things, as well as mixed with other sands to, you know, make concrete, which is our primary, is our primary business.
As soon as you pull it out, you, it has occupation already, it knows where it's going, you don't have to store it somewhere or anything.
No, yeah, any storage that we have, you know, we, it costs us to have any inventory or storage on the ground, right? Especially with this sand where it, we found blows away in the wind. So it, you know, you're essentially watching your money blow away in the wind, which isn't very fun. So it's, you kind of screen it and pile it up as you're taking it out and using it.
Are you gonna, is it going to be easy to sync your operations with your guys' operations together? You're gonna have to be communicating pretty.
Yeah, I believe so. I actually was gonna go to this gentleman and ask him for his card afterwards to talk and, you know, I just assume it's gonna be as easy as we've worked with other solar companies in the north of here. You know, they, they don't want to have to pay to move the sand out of the way to put their solar panels in. You know, so it's a benefit to them for us to go in and flatten out land first. But you know, we've talked about, obviously, if they go in, they need to start building, right? And we got to go that, you know, there's certain deals in the, the contract, right? That, you know, there's leases signed first and, right, we pick up and pull out, reclaim all the land and get out of there.
Do operations slow down in the winter time?
They do, yeah. It's, you know, we still go in the winter time. You know, the months of December to, you know, February, it's very seasonal, a little bit like to be outside pouring concrete and zero degrees, right? Construction season, summer, kind of late fall are the busier portions.
What's your best guess on how long it'll take you to get between that, that ten million turns out?
If we were to go in and flatten that whole thing, fifteen, twenty years? Right, that's why, you know, I brought up the fact of, you know, if they go forward, this gentleman had ten, you know, five years to, on his conditional use, with looking at another five-year extension, right? It's, you know, kind of a long-term plan here. You know, that's also why I talked about starting on that north side and working south. So if there's any point which we got to pull out, you know, it's flattened and leveled, and it's not little pockets or holes here and there.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any further questions? Well, we, we we have a, we have a section in our agenda later in the meeting for public comment. Well, you can talk to whatever comment topic you want to at, at that point in the agenda.
Before discussion, before you approve it?
Nope.
So I can't comment before you approve it, as in Jason probably won't?
We, we, we recently changed to match the, the county commission's guidelines on public comment, and I don't know if our attorney wants to speak to the changes we made, but.
I own, I own sixteen hundred acres adjacent to this. And I would like to make a comment on what I think will happen if you allow this travel pit or this sand pit to take place. In short, I think it will lower the quality
He's not at the mic.
The value of my property. That sand will not stay. It is a very windy place out there. My, my dad and my uncle own five thousand acres there. They sold on this property to the church. And I don't even know if they have the mineral rights, because we didn't sell the mineral rights. That's my first question. Do they have mineral rights? Do this.
Well, that, that.
These are important questions, and that's why I would like to comment respectfully.
You are welcome to comment during the public comment section of the agenda. That's right. And I'll, I'll let the county attorney speak.
I don't understand why that would be.
I'd like to, the county attorney, please, to recognize the county attorney.
Did you receive notice of tonight's meeting? Did you receive notice of tonight's meeting, this is an adjacent land? Did you, did you mail or send anything into the county, the planning commission?
No, because I expected to be able to come here and sign in like I have so many times in the past.
Yeah, that procedure's been changed, and your notice is just this.
I didn't have a notification of that.
The notice you received said to send it in prior to tonight's meeting, so the commissioners can consider those comments.
Well, it just, it seems very logical that I can come up and just speak for a couple minutes.
But it, but it's not logical to just. And that's why you were given notice and asked to submit something before this meeting, so that they can consider it properly.
I, I wish I could just show you how much the wind blows over there. And he talks about reclamation, that's not going to happen. It's too dry. It's too windy. And you disturb this soil, it will create disruption all around there, and this area is right next to the city of Alberta. Where we own fifty acres. That's basically all I wanted to say. Please consider this as you consider your decision.
You can go forward.
Thank you. Okay, so we've had the applicant. Is there any further questions from the commission?
Can, can staff speak to what the, in, in one of the items that, and I think he mentioned that they have air quality federal standards. Do you know anything about what those are? federal standards. Do you know anything about what those are?
So yeah, they do need to get a permit from the Department of Air Quality Control and they do frequently regulate and monitor and do checkups and things like that. Anytime there, if there's a complaint or anything, they will go down and, and check the area and talk to the, the mine operators and make sure that that is under control. So that's, it, it's not in the county's hands. Unfortunately, it is in the Department of Air Quality Control, which is a state, state organization, state department.
So, so just, I want to make sure that, so this isn't allowed use in the zone?
Correct. Yeah, so this is a little bit unusual because most areas that we allow mining operations, it's not a conditional use, it's a permitted use and they have to meet certain specific conditions in our ordinance that Kevin referred to in, in, uh, chapter six of our ordinance. What the PC zone allows for is for mining operation subject to a conditional use approval. And that's why normally you don't review mining operations in most zones, but this one is required because of the wording in the PC zone ordinance. So this is why it's coming to you for your review.
I, I would like to ask the applicant. I've got a question for him, please. What, what is your plan for dust control?
Dust control is usually mitigated through water trucks, chemical stabilization on the dirt road. You know, watering of piles, making sure your piles aren't too tall to blow in the wind. You know, if you look at the city of Alberta, which is to the south of here, you know, you're, you're looking at hurricane strength winds in order to blow that sand down that far. You know, we've had, I think I have five to six other division of air quality permits throughout the state. I have a weekly meeting, uh, which has been going on right now about air quality with our permits. Making sure that we're in standards and checkable. So that's something that, you know, we frequently monitor as well as they come out and check us. Make sure that we're abiding by their conditions that they set.
So if I, if I understand correctly, this, we, we give you a, a, a permit to have this conditional usage on the property. But before you could actually act on that permit, you'd also need to get another permit from air quality.
Yeah, there's actually several other permits that we need to get from both the federal government and the state government.
What's your source of water out there?
Source of water is, um, our, we have two locations. We've talked to Farmland Reserve about using a well that they have nearby. As well as we have a, two other mining operations to the north here. Where we have water, we pull out of the lake as well as wells.
Any further questions from the commission?
The other, the other areas that you've taken the sand out of, have you had any complaints from local population there?
The area the north of here, I do not believe we have had complaints. You know, we, we regularly water on our mining operations because, you know, for us, it's all about production. If we get shut down from air quality for a day, it just cost us five times more than running a water truck. So it's, you know, highly motivating for us to make sure that, you know, we're keeping the neighbors happy, not blowing dust all over from both, you know, a social perspective and a financial.
Do you have some concerns that it's close to the town there? That, have you ever been that close to a town where you've been doing that?
Yes, I've been closer to towns and this one, quite frankly, doesn't concern me with that.
How has it been when you've been closer to the towns? It's worked out pretty good?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've been in there by, by all the regulations that we have to. You know, unfortunately, nobody likes sand screening gravel operations, right? But they are necessary part to function as the community to build and grow.
Hey, thank you. Is there any, any further discussion from the commission? Is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve the staff recommendation that the US County Planning Commission approved conditional use application CU 2025-11. Crossing out the crushing of aggregate material as that was no longer needed. And then all the recommendations, one through seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on, on this conditional use permit? If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The permit is approved. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is a proposed text amendment to the Utah County Land Use Ordinance. Sections 2.08 and 8.76. This is subject to a public hearing. And so after we hear the text amendment, we will open to public hearing for comment on this item.
Okay, my name's Ryan Harris. So this, uh, this code amendment is coming before the planning commission tonight due to Senate Bill 104, which was passed by the state earlier this year. And Senate one, Senate Bill 104, it made some changes to how you can move a property line. Made additional requirement for ag- agricultural divisions and then also changed some requirements for subdivision amendments. And so that's what this code, uh, code amendment has done is help us bring our code into compliance with state code. And so, uh, I wanted to go over a few just, uh, major points with this code amendment. And so the first one is, uh, this, the Senate Bill 104. It changed how you can move property lines. So there used to be five, six different ways you can move a property line through warranty deed, quit, quitclaim deed, boundary, uh, boundary agreements, boundary line agreements. And so this state code removed all those and made it so you now have, the way you move a boundary is through a boundary adjustment. So it's consolidated into one way that you can move a boundary adjustment. And so in state code, it lists they have to have a conveyance document and certain things within that conveyance document. But the big change is now it requires a notice of consent from the land use authority. So we have to review all the boundary adjustments now and then write a notice of consent that's recorded with that conveyance document and into recorder's office. So we updated our code to meet all those state code requirements. Uh, another change we did was with agricultural divisions. Those are staying the same, but there's an additional requirement now that you have to record a record of survey with the surveyor's office. So they, state codes added additional requirement for those agricultural divisions. So we added that into our code. Another big change is state code now allows you to add additional lots in a subdivision through a subdivision amendment process. And so we've updated our code to make sure we allow that now. And then we did some code reorganization. So any code, codes that talked about moving property lines or division of land, we've moved all those to, uh, chapter 14. Cause they used to be spread out throughout our codes. We've taken all those, anything related to property line movement, movements, divisions, subdivisions are all in one area now. So it's a little easier to find, understand, so you don't have to bounce around. And then the last major change we made, um, this is a staff proposal, is we're proposing a minor and a major subdivision amendment. The major subdivision amendment meets all the requirements that we have in our code right now. The minor subdivision amendment, uh, we have some plat amendments that are really simple. They may be changing the plat note. They may be moving a property line just a couple of feet. It's not affecting the utility line, utility easement. And so with the minor subdivision amendment, we wouldn't require those utility letters. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but I've seen applicants, it'd take them over a month sometimes to get those utility letters from Rocky Mountain Power. Quest or Gas or, and Bridge, I think it is now. They change all the time. And, um, so different, those utility companies, sometimes it's really hard for them to get those. And so it actually will speed up the process by a month. When they really don't need those utility letters because no utilities are being affected. So that's what the minor subdivision amendment is. And so again, this is, uh, really the main focus on this is just bringing our code up to meet Senate Bill 104 requirements. And with this, uh, conditional use, uh, public, uh, the planning commission does need to hold a public hearing. And then you give a recommendation to the county commission and I'm here to answer any questions you have on this code amendment.
Seems like a lot of work.
Yeah. If you look at it, there's a lot of pages and a lot of changes.
Ryan's done a lot of good work. I mean, he's, it's, it's a big, it was a big change for these boundary adjustments. And so it was a major change in state code. And so Ryan's done a lot of work to kind of make sure that we're in compliance with that and kind of make, trying to make the process easier for those that come to the county to, to make these adjustments and still meet state code requirements.
Can you explain why, why do they do that? Like, I missed that part. I mean, I don't understand.
Yeah, so before this amendment, there were a lot of different ways that you could, uh, move a property line. There was a boundary line agreement. There was a quitclaim deed. There was fence line agreements. There is all these different types. And they tried to consolidate, consolidate it into one way. So it's very consistent. Everyone knew what they needed to do. And the big change is before it didn't require us to review it. They could just go to the county recorder's office and record it. Which was allowed per state code because in the recorder's office, if it meets certain requirements, they have to record it. But now it requires us to review it and to consent to the boundary agreement. Which is nice in one way because we do see a lot of illegal divisions where people will go out in the county illegally subdivide their land. And then they sell the property and then they come into us wanting to build a home. And we tell them, you can't because it was illegally subdivided. And it causes a lot of problems and different things. So hopefully this will also help with that. And I think that's one of the other reasons why the state changed it is to kind of help with that. Cause you see, you don't see it so much in cities. I've worked in several other cities before this job, but you see it a lot more in the county. Where people move lot lines and create parcels that don't meet our requirements anymore.
And I don't know, I, I've, I've actually personally been caught up in this. I bought a property and they went, we went and surveyed it and it was old block chains and some other descriptions that were just off a few feet. And there were fences that had been in place for years. And so you know, we had to get boundary agreements with neighbors that the fence would now be the new line, which then had a new survey, you know, description to match. And anyways, it was, it's quite a process, but it was, you know, just to get agreements from all the surrounding property owners and it was pretty much recorded and done. And we went ahead with the purchase of the property after, you know, after it was all settled, so. But this adds more clarity and, and kind of a, a standard process to follow.
If it's a standard process now that everyone has to follow and there are specific items that have to be in this conveyance document. And so they're all very similar and there's no confusion about what it's actually doing.
So in your, in your opinion, does this simplify things?
In some ways, yes. Some ways, no. It does make it nicer on the part of you're not gonna see these illegal divisions. You're not gonna see people move property lines around, sell it. And then the future owner has a property that they can't do anything with because it's, doesn't meet our code requirements anymore. It does require a little bit more. Um, it does require a site plan now, um, showing where the uh, the current property lines are and then where the new property line is gonna be. And then the size and different things like that. So there's a few that will more things asked to be added to it. Um, we've tried to figure out ways to try to help the applicant. That's, I've worked with several other departments that are gonna help us review these, but to try to figure out a way to simplify it a little and help them out, but still meet all state code requirements.
Is this, okay, how does this, is this just county or does this affect the cities or?
Everyone. This is statewide. So it's actually came about by state representatives and the surveyors. So a lot of surveyors discussed this. There was a long discussion between surveyors, recorders and state representatives and they were all working together. And this is what they, they came up with.
So currently this is, this is state law.
Correct.
And so we're just, I guess, codified it or making it so it's legal here in the county. Our prior code was, was was allowed to, to the state code.
So our prior code followed the prior state requirements. And so, uh, this is us bringing it up to new requirements. So we created a whole new section for boundary agreements because we didn't have that before. Where we reference the state code and what's in state code requirements. And then like with the plat amendments, we removed the language saying you can't add any lots through a subdivision amendment process, which now you can. So we removed that. So there was, uh, it's really, we were following state code. They changed state code. Now we need to bring our code back up to state code requirements.
Can, who's controlling the?
Do you have a specific, you want me to go through or? Yeah. So I won't go too much into the definitions. Really what we did is we went through definitions and we referenced state code. Cause all these definitions are in state code. So we didn't see why we needed to, you know, just yes, use the same wording. So we just referenced state code. These are all the items next, uh, we, were related to divisions of land, like agricultural divisions or moving lot lines. And we moved all these into Title 14 where the subdivisions were. So all of that is in one place. So and that's what all this is right here. And then also the condominium projects, we moved that to the subdivision chapter. And then this is where all the new requirements will be. So we changed the title, the subdivision. This is, uh, the subdivision section to include boundary adjustments and divisions of land. This is the new, uh, boundary adjustment that we, uh, we created to meet state code requirements. So they'll have to do an application. And then we reference state code. And, and state code lists all the requirements in there. And then we do require that the county engineer and the county health department, uh, review it. The reason why is there's two different types of boundary adjustments. There's a simple and there's a full in state code. A simple boundary adjustment, you can do that if you're not affecting, uh, any type of easements, road, utility easements, sanitary sewer or, uh, septic tanks, uh, different items like that. If you're not affecting any of those, you can follow the simple. And then if you are affecting one of those items, then you fall under the full boundary adjustment. And, uh, one of the changes too is in a, in a subdivision. If you fall under a simple boundary adjustment, you don't have to do a plat amendment. But if you fall under a full boundary adjustment, you will have to do a plat amendment. And so there's a lot of plat amendments that aren't affected by, that's not affecting utility easements, different things. So they won't have to do a plat amendment anymore. They have to follow this full boundary adjustment requirement. So that's what's kind of explained here.
Before you scroll much further.
Yes.
Uh, on E under 14, there's, it says confirm, I think you meant conform. Parcels conform with land use rather than parcels confirm with land use regulations.
Let's see, under E? This one right here?
Yep, the last one.
Oh yeah, conform. Yes. Thank you.
It's in one other section. It's in one other section as well, under two, on, I think the following page.
Yeah. Thank you. Such a big one that it's easy. Thank you. Um, okay. Let me just write that down really quick, so I remember. Sounds a good catch.
It's easier when I haven't read it as many times as you have.
Okay, and then I will make sure I find the other one. So I remember it's in two places.
Yeah.
And I'll make that update before.
Confirm that or conform it?
Confirm. Conform, you know, it can be interesting.
We're not looking at conforming.
Okay, um, so this is a full boundary right here. Where we also, we had the health department and a public works department review it. And the, the public works department's looking at the utility easements to public roads, the health department's looking at the, the septic, seeing if it's affected. If any of those items are affected, they bounce to the full. And then in the full boundary adjustment, if they're not in a plat amendment, but it is affecting the public utility easement somehow, then we require them to get a utility letter. Confirming that the utility company is okay with that utility easement moving. And then also it requires our approval that consent, notice of consent. And so that's what that is. This is this copying and pasting what we had in previous sections. We just made it a little more.
Moved it basically.
Moved it basically. And this is the record of survey map that's now required for the agricultural divisions. And then we just, this is a little cleanup. It's not a conditional use anymore. Subdivisions are administrative decisions and so administrative applications. So it's reviewed by staff. So we just changed it to large scale development application. And we did that throughout the different sections and then we updated, because we moved this section of code right here, eight point seven six to four point four oh four. So that's what all this is right here, is this some cleanup items. And then we did make some changes. We did some cleanup to our subdivision amendments. Um, this is made a little more concise here. Instead of having two paragraphs, I put it into one. This is where we removed that you couldn't increase dwelling units or lots. That's what this was right here. So we removed that. So it's allowed now. And then some cleanup items. This is where we discuss the minor and the major. So you fall under a minor subdivision amendment. If you fall under a simple, simple boundary adjustment, but you want to do a subdivision amendment, this makes it a little bit more cleaner on the parcel map. They aren't required to, but if they'd like to, then they can follow the minor subdivision. And then you also fall under the minor if you're not affecting public road or private road, road easements or utility easements. And then you fall under the minor. And then this just goes over the different requirements. We just made a, some stuff that we currently do, we just added that here, that they needed a legal description. That mats, matches the plat and the title report. And then down here, I, I added some more signature blocks, but these are what we require state code, state code requires. And so we just added it here. It's what we have in all of our subdivision sections for plats. So we just added that. And then we added this right here, because county fire marshal usually doesn't review subdivision plats. Unless there's any lots that are smaller than five acres, or if it's in a mountain, uh, mountain home development or rec resort, kind of like Sundance, because they have smaller lots that require fire hydrants. So we just added that he doesn't have to review the plat amendment where he used to, unless it meets these requirements. And then this is, we removed the requirement in a minor subdivision that they have to get the utility letters. Because the utility letters or utilities aren't being affected. And so again, that will save an applicant upwards of a month or two. I don't know why it takes them so long, but I've, I've seen it take a long time. So should save people time when they really don't need those letters. And then this is this saying here for the major, that they have to meet all the minor subdivision requirements. And, and they have to get the utility letters. And lot line adjustments, those aren't allowed anymore. They removed those in state code. Now it's through either a plat amendment or the boundary adjustment we talked about. So we removed that out of the code. And then this was this copy and paste here, moving condominium projects into chapter fourteen.
That's all language that already is in code.
Yep, correct.
Okay, I think that's the first section of code where I've seen the word mesh before. They mesh harmoniously. I'm like, what?
Yeah, we didn't really, I honestly, I think that's something, we probably need to update our condominium code section. But this was just focusing on the state code, but there is some language in there that's kind of interesting.
Okay, any further questions?
How long did that take you?
Uh, a while, because I had to, I worked with the surveyor's office, public works, recorders. It was, it was a several month process.
Seems like it.
Yeah.
The real question is who's going to go clean up all the improper boundary adjustments and lot liners?
I vote Greg.
I was gonna say on the one that I did, I, I think the surveyor just pulled out a paper and had neighbors sign it. And that was, I think, the extent of it. It was pretty easy and, I mean.
This wouldn't be retroactive, would it?
No, no. Now, starting now.
But, but you got to wonder about the discrepancies created by that, that simple, easy process that can be messed up or misunderstood by owner and, and no check on utilities, as far as I know. I don't know what checks like that were done, so.
And this, yeah, like we were saying before, it was, uh, this was, it came up by the surveyors too. A lot of the main surveyors in the state, private surveyors and the recorders. Like there was a bunch of people that are involved in this.
Any further discussion from the commission? Thank, thank you. Thank you on that. We will, we now need to have a public hearing session. So I'll entertain a motion.
To a public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to open to a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Nay. Okay, we are now in a public hearing session. Is there anyone, and I don't know if I, if all the, sorry, I did get some names here. But I guess this is for this public hearing, yes? Okay, so I do have three that have their names as they would like to speak. And so if they're here, we'll hear from them. Sam Kusik?
That was who.
Wanted to speak earlier, okay. Taylor Larson. Is there a Taylor Larson here to speak? Okay, and Mark Jacob. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to address the public hearing? Please, please come state your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Okay, my name is Wade Garner. I live in Alberta, Utah. And I'm also here with these two gentlemen, Bill Ford, Merrill West. We're on the board with the Alberta Water Company. It's the state approved water system that we have in our community and a privately owned one, one of the few in the state. So I do have some questions. And all of my comments and questions are done respectfully. I appreciate you guys being here and being willing to listen.
And let me just, can I, can I?
Yes, please.
This is about this text amendment, your, your comments are about this text amendment that we've been talking about to meet state code.
My comments are about the solar farm and the gravel pit.
What I, what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll have you pause right now. Because this actual public hearing is only about this one agenda item for now. There is a section later where we will open up for.
Because I was told that we would have time.
I understand how confusing that is, but yeah, we'll, we'll have you pause right now and then come back in just a couple minutes when we open the public comment.
Okay.
Since, since, since your comments are not related to this, this item that's, that's under consideration right now, we'll have you come back. So is there anyone else who would like to talk about this text amendment as part of the public hearing? Okay, I, I suggest we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, the public hearing for, for this item is now closed. Um, is there any further discussion? If not, uh, is there a motion, please?
Make a motion that the Utah County Planning Commission recommend approval to the Utah County Commission of the proposed text amendments to Utah County Land Use Ordinance, updating chapters and sections two point zero eight, eight point seven six, eight point eight zero and fourteen. Along with any applicable renumbering and refor, or reformatting in each section based on the findings listed in section five of the staff report.
And, and would you also include the confirm, conform changes?
Grammar errors that are there.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
On the second, to the motion to, to, to recommend this to the Utah County Commission as, as moved. Is there any further discussion from the commission on this? If there's no further commit, uh, discussion, we will move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. We have a unanimous recommendation to the county commission on this item. Moving on, next to the, on the agenda is other business. Uh, we have an update on Utah County Moderate Income Housing Implementation Plan.
So I'm Sheldon with the Utah County Planning Division. And yeah, here to share a quick update on our county, Utah County twenty twenty five moderate income housing report. So which we, we submitted to the Department of Work, Work for Services on July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And so based on the state code section seventeen twenty seven eight, four oh eight. So Utah County has adopted four applicable strategies. The strategy one is, hold on one second. No, fine. So the strategy one is, that is strategy E. Oh, it's E, strategy E. That is something related to the detached ADU. So the county adopted ordinance twenty twenty five dash six twenty three, which reduce the set and rear setbacks requirements in the R five zone and TR five zones. And make it more flexible and easier for residents to build detached ADU or residential accessory dwellings, or residential accessory structures in these two zones. And also in our next report year, we will re, review some ordinance and regarding the parking requirements to reduce some barriers, okay? And the next strategy is about the zone or rezone for higher density or for, or moderate income residential development in commercial or mixed use zones, commercial centers or employment centers. So we've continued developing policy updates for caretaker, caretaker dwellings and agricultural worker housing. So staff reviewed existing zones, reached out to some large farm operators and considered to draft ordinance amendments or rezone to make these housing types more practable, practical. And so next report year, we're gonna draft some ordinance amendments or rezone underway to increase flexibility and clarify some standard in some, in some applicable zones. And the next strategy is about, so coordinate with the partnership with an entity that applies for state or federal funds or tax incentives to promote the construction of moderate income housing. So we've strengthened coordination with the housing authority of Utah County. We hope, we held a follow meetings in December last year and to update our existing agreement. And also discuss about our long terms goals with the Utah House, Utah, Utah County Housing Authority. And also through our CDBG program, the county helped found a housing rehabilitation project serving about three hundred and sixty homes in Spanish Fork. And the refugees transitional housing project in Orem, which has one hundred and twenty baths and nine residential units. So our next last strategy is about demonstrate utilization of moderate income housing set aside from community CRA or J, CRA or other agency to create moderate income housing. So we implemented the new community CRA policy adopted in last year, August. It encourages CRA project to delegate, to delegate at least a ten percent of tax increment, increment funds to moderate income housing. And then so on October fourteenth, we've received a compliance send, a letter from Utah Department of Work Service, Work for Service, which means we've met the state requirement. And we pass. Yeah, that's it. And also I want to provide another information on this strategy. And also we participate in National Association County Housing Solution Program. And this is all, so this stuff, all, this update is about our county moderate income housing in twenty twenty five report. Do you have any questions?
So just to follow up, this is, this is a requirement by the state for every jurisdiction that they have to follow. Um, we have to pick several strategies and we're required to pick three. We have four different strategies. As you know, with being very familiar with the land use ordinance that you deal with on a regular basis. The, um, the moderate income housing with the lot sizes and that we generally deal with in the county make it very difficult for the county to kind of find strategies that work best. The strategies that we've chosen have worked for the county. They are, and we have found that especially the ones that we see immediate results on are some of the, like the ADU requirements. We've had a, a, a very, an uptick in the number of people that are applying for those. You'll see those numbers, probably the end of the year price will probably bring some of that information to you. But we've had more applications for ADUs than we have in the past. So some of the strategies that we're working on are, are helping to create some of those areas that could provide moderate income housing for residents of unincorporated county. A lot of the strategies kind of are work to support other jurisdictions in developing some of those moderate income housing options, because that's where most of the demand is and where most of the employment centers and transportation areas or transportation nodes are for people that, that need to commute to different jobs and stuff like that. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have some of those areas be in unincorporated areas where there's so much distance to travel. Some of the strategies, we're trying to work with local agricultural producers to kind of accommodate some of worker housing and stuff like that, that we want to try and kind of continue to support our agricultural industry in the county. So those are kind of, and Shao's done a lot of great work and she's been instrumental in, in getting that approval from the state, which is always not always fun to try and go through that process, but we didn't have any comments that came back negatively for our, our report. And so it's kind of kudos to kind of her efforts in, in developing that as well, so.
So, so we, we have a state requirement and we met, met the requirements. And you had to go give a report and the report came back that it was acceptable or whatever, what we, we did in the, in the prior year.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
And part of your report was that in this coming year, we'll look at parking, if I remember what you, you stated.
Precariously, yeah, we're reviewing our, yeah, ordinance. Preciously, yeah, we're reviewing our ordinance to take some actions for some appropriate change or something like that, but not only for like parking stuff or something like that. We will consider other like amendment or rezon something.
Be likely to see some of those changes come across these agendas so that you have a chance to review some of those. And we'll point those out as they come through the application process through the coming years so that you can be aware of those times that you're reviewing our strategies and kind of help to develop those strategies that will meet that moderate income housing requirement.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's awesome. Any, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the part of the agenda where we will take public comment. And I know, just as an explanation, the, the prior code that we operated under, we allowed comment on every item on the agenda. And that's just, and now we, we still allow comment, it's just that we have moved it to the end of the agenda to match the Utah County Commissioners' agenda format. And to, just to be more in line with, with, again, with state code and, and the way meetings need to be conducted. Part of it is, part of it is that, like, like was mentioned, if there is comment that you feel we need before a decision is made, you're welcome to submit it before a deadline and in writing. And then we can have that to be considered as part of all the information we receive before the meeting. And so I don't, I don't, I mean, that, that was discussed and voted on one month ago, two months ago, anyways, a couple of meetings ago. And so it is new and part of the change required that the public notice, include information and more specific bullets about how comments could be provided before the meeting. And so, and, and the fact that the public comment is now moved to the end of the agenda. So this matches the Utah County Commissioners, not just the Planning Commission, but we now follow kind of their format and make it more consistent. So people have a little more kind of repeatable and reliable process that they can follow between the different meetings they might attend. So we're, we're following the Utah County Commission, their, their plan. And we're trying to do our best to, you know, follow the same rules. So we will now open the meeting to public comment. And, and I'm sorry that I had to cut you short on that since that particular public hearing was about that one particular item. Now we are open to whatever comments you might have for us.
Okay, thank you. I'll start over. My name is Wade Garner. I live in Alberta. I've lived there for 23 years. I built a home there. Like many people, we love the community. We love the rural setting. And I'm here officially with Bill Ford, who is president of our water company, and Merrill West. I'm, Merrill West and I are board members. And we came because we got the notice. So, and I have a comment. As I've been listening to all of this tonight, I've wrote down several comments. I hope there's no time limit. Okay, well, settle in. Okay. And like I had mentioned before, all of my comments may come in the form of a question, but I'm saying them all respectfully. I hope you understand that. It was mentioned by one of the gentlemen that presented the term minimal impact. Minimal impact is for those who don't live in Alberta. Many have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to live in rural Alberta, and we love it there. Question two, comment two. The taxable value that was brought up would increase possibly through this solar farm. Would that allow the county to maintain roads a little better in our community, which is a concern for a lot of people that live there? Question three, comment three. Highway six is a major highway. Will turn lanes be installed off of Highway six at developers' expense? And riprap going out of construction sites? Many gravel pits in the county are very hazardous going in and out of highways. One in particular in Genoa is the Maverick Gravel Pit. And also north of Santaquin on Highway 91 are very dusty and hazardous to property owners and traffic. Gravel pit owners are always quick to say there will be no dust and that they will maintain the dust. Never happens. I have heard that the state of Utah has, I believe, five, maybe six mine inspectors that inspect these sites over the whole state of Utah. And this gentleman here could maybe correct me if I'm wrong on that number, but only five or six is not very many to keep their eye on all these gravel pits that are going in around Genoa and Alberta. How many solar footprints do we really need on the west side of the lake? That map was pretty telling. It's, our, our side of the county over there is turning into one big, like, solar farm. So something to consider. Who will benefit from the generation of this solar farm? Is, is this power gonna stay in Utah or, or is it gonna be transmitted to Vegas or Los Angeles? These are questions that could have been considered to ask these gentlemen here tonight that presented. The main intersection in Alberta is a lot busier than many of you probably realize. The traffic starts at four in the morning with all the garbage coming from Orem and Provo, going out to the landfill, and it is all day long. And now we're gonna add all this construction. And the speed in that little corner of town that people travel is getting to be a concern for the, for the people who live there in Alberta. People are not paying attention and it's very dangerous. I'm afraid there's gonna be some serious traffic incidents out there in the near future with all this future construction. With the added tax revenue, would better law enforcement be available for that part of the county? These are all questions that could have been maybe asked to the presenters. Alberta Water Company has culinary state-approved wells and water lines from the company well that runs through this proposed solar and new gravel pit area. And so that is a concern for our, our water company that feeds drinking water for our citizens there in the town. Where will the water come from to keep the dust down with the wind, which has been mentioned? It's, it was mentioned by the CMC owner that this town of Alberta doesn't concern him. That's a direct, that he, that's what he said. This town doesn't concern him. Not sure what he meant by that, but that's what he said. Because of recent public comment changes, wouldn't it be best to allow a grace period to accommodate citizens that don't deal with this process every day? And/or couldn't you table decisions when property owner, owning citizens have concerns about their way of, way of and quality of life are challenged? All of those who came tonight and presented do not live or are renters in Alberta and really don't have much skin in the game with what they're proposing to do in our little community. And maybe it doesn't mean much to you guys. I have no idea where you live. But we love that little community. And from what I've seen tonight, it is drastically gonna change what goes on out there. Anyhow, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think the, the resolution we, we have, the, the change in, in the way the, the public comment is, and then this is our fault for not telling you, but I think it is a three-minute limit. So we'll, 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 we'll enforce that if anyone else wants to speak. You, yeah, because I interrupted you.
If they speak for a group, their time.
Yeah, if they speak for a group, then you can go up to seven. But you have to kind of group together and say, I'm the spokesperson for this group. Anyways, you're fine. Is there anyone else who would like to address the public comment section? Okay, and before we close this section of, of the agenda, I'd, I'd ask the commission if there's any comments or, or answers or rebuttal to the comment that was, that was made.
Not necessarily that. I'd just like to talk, I've, you mentioned the pledge in the beginning. I'm just wondering, I was not here when that happened too, so maybe have a, I just wonder why we don't have it. Why, why don't we do it?
Well, I think it's totally up to us if we want to put it back on the agenda. So I'm not sure how it got removed either, so. But it has been off for about six months or more.
I've noticed that. Well, I would move that we, we have the pledge on our agenda.
Okay. It's been moved to add the pledge back onto the agenda for our meetings.
Where that's not an agenda item, can we do an official business or just do a recommendation?
We can, we can add it to the next one, then we can, you can direct staff to, to make sure that, to do that.
I appreciated the comments and I, I do want, you know, we all, we all live in different parts of Utah County and some closer to your area than others. I, I do think, one thing, one thing I, I think is really important for the public to understand is there is, that these are allowed uses of the property that require a conditional use permit. I mean, it's, it's, so we can only vote it down if there's a harmful effect that is not mitigated.
And is included in the list in the state code. There are specific detrimental effects.
Specific detrimental effects. So it can't be, wow, there's a lot of solar, so that's detrimental. I mean, that, that's, it has to be one of the specifics detrimental effects that is listed in state code that we can then vote that it hasn't been mitigated. So I guess, I guess, I just want to make sure you understand. We, we see all these solar things too, but they're all permitted uses of the property these landowners have. And they're asking for a conditional permit and they're saying, here's all the, you know, the, the harmful effects that we have thought of. Can you think of any others? And here's how we're mitigating them. Once they've presented all those things, staff makes a recommendation, we hear all the reports and, and, and we're, we're not allowed to say, well, we've already done nine solar projects, 10 is, is breaking our back. You know, we, at that point, the, the land use has already been approved in ordinance and it just needs a conditional use permit that meets all the requirements, which, which all of the ones tonight met. So I think, and now this is just me, I, I mean, I, is, i- if, if we want to change what can be done with these lands, we can submit a zoning, you know, amendment change. You, I mean, if, if property owners don't like the fact that there's so many solar projects or so many, you know, whatever it is, you know, mining, well, you can submit a zoning change request, right? And, and we can hear that here and send it on to the Utah County Commission to be voted on there, because I don't think we vote on the actual zone changes here. But at any rate, I'm, I'm saying there's a process to go through that. But at the point that they're coming in here with a conditional use permit, some of those things, we don't like, those things have already been decided because it's already part of the allowed use of the, in the zone. And so that, those are things that, you know, and also this text amendment we made tonight, we can change some of the text of the allowed uses. And so those are things I think the public need to know that, I mean, this is the last chance to, you know, to stop something, I guess, maybe, right? I think after this, they still have to submit a full permit and not just a, a conditional permit, but they have to submit a permit to do the construction or whatever. There's still other chances. But the point is, I think the pub, public, you know, if they're, if they're, if they're not engaged enough to submit, you know, comment, you know, beforehand, before the meeting, you know, per the rules and, and other things that could be considered. I mean, I don't, I don't know. You know, it, our hands are a little bit tied at this point in the, in the process because the, the use is already a permitted use on the, on the land with the conditional permit application. If all those requirements are met, we have to vote yes. So I, I, and now we can wait, we can gather more public comment. I, I don't know, but we have a process to, to notice people so they can submit their comments. And, and as far as I know, we didn't receive any additional public comment on any of these before the meeting. So, yes.
So respectfully, if you have to vote yes, what was the point of us even coming?
I, sure, so it's not a have to, it's a, there are state codes.
That's what I heard.
So dictate, state code dictates what a conditional use can do and what can't do. And so based on state code requirements, conditional uses can have, are designed to have mitigation measures applied to detrimental effects. They have to be reasonably anticipated detrimental effects and they have to be reasonable mitigation measures. If they can't be reasonably mitigated, then they can be denied. So that's the, that's kind of the difference between exclusively permitted use versus a conditionally permitted use. State code generally does not allow for conditional uses. Well, they do allow for them to be denied, but it's a pretty high bar to deny them. And so it, it's not that, they're, they're not trying to approve those without any public comment. It's just the process to do that has been kind of defined by the planning commission to make sure that people can submit those comments prior so that they have, so the planning commission has time to review those to, to, if they feel like those comments need to be addressed further, they're, they're welcome to have those comments, people that made those comments come and present those comments and give more detail. So just to give you more.
So, for sure, absolutely. And we appreciate your involvement. I, I mean, I, I want you to know, we're, we're also, we, we, we understand that this affects people.
So if I could make a comment, I mean, just recently, we've had issues where a permit was requested and through the process of hearing and the public comments and things that were submitted, there were some major issues that came up and the request was rescinded. Because, or, or at least they, they had to go back to the drawing board. They had to figure some things out. So there, this is, this, I guess, in some ways, this is kind of like us making sure that people have dotted their i's and crossed their t's. Yeah, I share your concern about all the solar stuff. I.
You know, if we really had a king run in this country, we wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, right, right.
If I could make a comment, this goes back to my concern about when we made this change to not allow public comment prior to decisions. As, as, and I've seen this with multiple cities and stuff where they've done this and, I don't know. And I probably voted in favor of it, but I think I did voice my, my concern about that. I, I, I think as good a work as our staff does to try to find all the issues with every permit, every conditional use permit and stuff like that, there's gonna be some things that they probably aren't gonna be able, be able to find out, like, like the potential easement that comes through this property. If that's in place, I hope there's an easement there that will protect you, you know? But, but if, if we don't know about those things, we can't ask those questions, you know? And so that, that's kind of what rubs me a little bit wrong about not having public comment with some of these issues and not, because we're not smart enough to answer, to ask all the questions, you know? And again, like I said, our staff does a tremendous job to try to vet out all of the problems and issues that might arise. But, but if we miss something, you know, then, then I think it's a, a missed opportunity for us to, to, to pause that.
opportunity for us to, to, to pause that and correct those potential problems, to adjust some of the concerns that you have. And I know this sounds kind of like maybe a little bit dorky, but again, they are under regulations to abide by state codes and regulations for dust control and stuff like that. And I know you probably don't like to hear this, but it is the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. And every time you see those violations, report it, you know? The, the state, and they should have some, they should have some, they should have some signage on their property with that information. I know during construction, they have to because it's a swippy, stormwater pollution permit, blah, blah, blah. They should have a report number there for that. Again, speeding enforcement, stuff like that happens everywhere. But again, it goes back to that hokey comment. If you see it, report it, you know? And I know that I don't report things as much as I should, you know, because I'll complain about it, but I won't report it. And it, you know, it kind of goes against our grain of being a neighbor to report kind of some of that stuff, you know? But again, because that's the constraints that we're under, you know, then, then that's how we get changes made, is making those reports and stuff like that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say just a couple of comments there. I mean, like as far as police, we wouldn't, I mean, I don't think we've ever really talked to any applicant on a conditional use on whether they're going to increase the police because of their permit, right? I mean, that's a different jurisdiction to this. I, I know. And we don't know. We don't know. And we can't, yep, I agree. So there, there's only one, one other thing on, on this is so I agree that it would be, it's great that we could get comment before. And I think what we were trying to avoid, and I think, and, and I, I asked our attorney if he, if he, you know, agrees with this, but if someone had said, hey, there's, there's a, there's, you know, there's an easement that's going to be violated if you, if you, you know, and they bring this in here, kind of surprise information at the last minute and, and no one has a clear answer. And so we decide to wait, then that's, that's the very kind of thing that could have been vetted before the meeting. If it was that important, it should have been submitted before the meeting instead of like, well, I just came down here and I thought I'd throw out that there might be an easement that's going to be violated. And then we suddenly make a, a bad, a poor decision or even postpone at great cost to the applicant, something for, you know, some kind of a hearsay comment that was made here. So if, if it's, if it's really valid and it needs to be considered, there's a process to submit it beforehand. So we can all have the time to look into it, consider it, and we can get a, an opinion on it.
And the applicant as well has a chance to.
As well gets to hear that before the meeting and, and be prepared to address whether that's an issue that they can mitigate or not. And so, so I just want to say that I, I, I agree that it makes it awkward that this comment comes after in, in a lot of ways. But there is a process to submit beforehand and that makes it fair for, for both, for all parties involved and including us.
I'll just push back on that just a little bit. I mean, how many years has planning commissions and county commissioners been holding meetings? And for all of these years, the standard operating procedure was you can come to the meeting and make your comment. This change was made just recently. And so it's going to take a time for the general public to understand that change and that process change. If I get a notice in the mail that says blah, 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 I'm probably not going to read everything. My first instinct is going to be what has been the historical experience. I can go to the media and make a comment, you know? And so I, I understand what you're saying and I understand the process and stuff like that. But, but again, the, the way things that have been done in the past, you know, there's a long history of that having been allowed and done. So to make this change abruptly, I think it, it comes as a surprise to many people. And, and again, those, those are, those are some of the reasons I don't, I don't really agree with that process. I do understand that, you know, when you get 70 people show up to, to an agenda item, it can draw your meeting out very, very long till 11 o'clock at night. But, and I know that that's trying to prevent, prevent some of that stuff, but those are my comments.
It was my understanding with our discussion on this last time or whenever, is that if we felt like we needed to, that we, that it would be prudent to allow public comment, that we could then open it, voice it as a board and, and, and in this case, maybe that was a mistake that we made that we should have, we should have said, you know what, there's, there's, you know, we don't have 70 people here trying to make public comment. We just one or a couple, one or two voices that we could provide that for. I think that was something that we understood when we passed this measure, but we forgot in the moment here where we could have allowed one or two comments to come forward and bring up items that, I mean, he, he basically was commenting, just not at the mic. And we did do some more inquiries about those comments that he was addressing, but I think it was a bit of maybe an insult that we didn't give him a little bit more time at the mic. And I think that's something that maybe in the future, we should take into consideration, allow if there's just a few voices that, somebody that didn't understand the process, let them forward. Or at least put a vote on it, on the, to the planning commission, see if that's something that we want.
Or you can preface the sections of the meeting with an idea of what things look like at the beginning of the meeting. Go over the agenda. Say first, we have our conditional use applications. These are applications that are like this for which there is no public comment. Then we will have these items for which there is public comment. All other comment is at the end of the meeting. Everyone comes into the meeting, understanding what the process is.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
I do agree that the agenda as it's written, it, it's not clear enough. If this is what you're reading, no public comment unless board votes to, to open public comment should be put it on that part of the agenda.
The highlighted part is where it talks about submitting comment.
Yep. And it is in yellow and everything else. I, I agree. That's there. But you know, we have this part that says there's a public hearing, but this whole section here where there is no public comment.
I, I just think it might be a good thing to, to state at the beginning and maybe as part of the call to order, just say, by the way, these are the items of our agenda. If there is public comment for these items, it needed to have been submitted by 1:00 PM. And then, and then the public comments is at the end of the meeting, just kind of outline it at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could do more to outline it at the beginning verbally, but I think since the agenda is sent out and then, you know, I mean, if they, if they're not aware that, okay, there's no, there's no verbal comment either. I won't, my only option is to submit it in writing beforehand. It needs to be more clear on the agenda that there will not be verbal comment unless the commission votes to open it up to public comment. So we should, we should make that change on this, on the agenda before it's sent out. I actually thought that's what we had voted on adding into the agenda last time. So. With the resolution.
So we, we, my understanding, and we can do that, we can definitely do that. My, based on the comments at our last agenda or last planning commission meeting, we are, we did add additional language in our notices for public comment. We made it clear that those public comments needed to be submitted prior to the meeting. We, we can definitely increase that amount or that, making it more clear as much as we can. We'll, we'll look at that again and, and make those comments and then we'll look at the agenda and see if there's ways that we can include some explanation as far as what needs to be included, what is included in public comment and what isn't, won't, will be heard or what, when it will be heard.
All right. Any, any further discussion on this? Okay. We have reached the end of the agenda. As far as I remember, the meeting is adjourned without a vote.